Some texts, some graphs, some charts, some information. And they will be asked to take some notes on that information. They'll have a question ahead of time and take some notes on that, the text. Then in part two, they will use those notes that they've taken in order to compose an on-demand response to a prompt. In other words, they have to write about the prompt using the notes they've taken in the first part. Each of those, as I say, it takes about 50 minutes. There's no time limit on it though, so if a student needs more time, we will allow them more time to complete it. They will know upfront what type of writing they're going to be asked to do, whether it's a narrative, in other words, a story, if it's informative, or if it's going to be an argument. They take a position and try to defend their position. MDP T then addresses these standards: ELA, English Language Arts Writing, the History of Government Social Studies Standards, and Science. That's what makes it multidisciplinary because you're looking at all of those sets of standards. And it's looking for that common area where the standards overlap. So can you communicate about the content? That's the purpose of the MDP T. Now, sometimes we'll need help understanding the results. A moment to read this. It's really tough to make assessment entertaining, so.
You're doing a good job. I like it.
What the state has done is develop some rubrics. This one is for an opinion piece at the third to fifth grade level. And you can see there are different areas where the students will be scored. And they're rated one to four on how well they do. Same idea, a little more complex as you get to the high school level. This one happens to be an argumentative rubric. Now, there will be iPad testing this year for the first time in Garden City. We're going to pilot testing on the iPads at two schools, Victor Nellis and Georgia Matthews. We'll see how it goes. There's some evidence from an earlier testing session that students who take it on iPads may perform differently, but we'll find out. This is our baseline year. It's a good time to test it. It is a pretty intensive experience in terms of the technology department's going to have to touch each computer or each iPad because there has to be certain restrictions on where the kids can go on it. So there'll be a lot of coordination between the sysops within the building, the technology department, and of course, the learning services office with the assessment.
Dr. Dennis, are those students used to working with an iPad?
Both of those schools do have iPads in the building and are using them, yes.
That was my question.
Okay. Good question. We always need to monitor our performance. And so the state is monitoring the assessment. Every year, they travel and visit five to 10 percent of schools as they're giving the assessment. And they do that in a combination of volunteer schools. We always volunteer for that. We always want to be transparent, and so we'll tell the state, you know, feel free to come at any time. But they're also randomly selecting schools around the state. About 80 percent of the visits, the state tells us, are unannounced visits.
So when they come out, they're just sitting in the classroom watching the kids take the test?
They will come, they have a checklist, things that they expect to see in a testing situation. And they'll, they'll check it off. They'll meet with principal, they may meet with some teachers and ask them questions. And then they'll let us know what they found.
So you guys tell them which schools we go to because other than all schools are testing different?
Yeah, they will, they will generally check with us at the district office to find out who's testing and what days.
Do you know they're here when they're here?
Yeah, they'll, they'll touch base with us. So, yeah. High school level assessments have changed a little bit. I told you they moved to ninth grade. The original plan, if you remember Sally Cabo when she was here talked about this, the state talked about a bouquet of assessments, of being able to choose a different assessment according to what your program or your interest was. The ACT, the state assessment, SAT. They submitted that to the U.S. Department of Ed and that was rejected. The state was told you need one assessment at the high school level. They also requested to move it to ninth grade. That was also not accepted at the federal level. So what they came up with, which I think in many ways is better, is a plan to test at the 10th grade level and everybody takes the state assessment. But after that, they're focusing on developing assessments that are appropriate to different career pathways. So that once you get clear of that state assessment at the 10th grade level, and there's no second test anymore at the high school level. But once you're past that 10th grade, then the focus is on where is your career pathway taking you and those end-of-career assessments to, to work toward a certification or preparation for the next level. We will not know scores this year until the fall. There are no cut scores set on the state assessments, at least in English Language Arts and Math. So we won't get scores as quickly as we, as we normally do. There's a committee that will meet at the state level in July, I believe, to help set the scores. We'll get scores sometime then after that. Around the start of school, I would expect to know how we did on the state assessments. We will reach the end of this all together. And that is also the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Rude?
How do these, so Kansas is taking about the bouquet, if you will, after 10th grade.
Right.
10th is when everybody's got to have the same test.
Correct.
And then how is this path forward on assessment dovetailing into college?
With college?
Yeah, with, with state colleges.
Well, one of the, one of the outcomes of that would be ACT or SAT preparation. If you're college-bound, that would be part of your assessment pathway, part of your bouquet as well. If your intent is to be a welder, then you would take the high school courses along those lines and there would be a certification test. Or nursing, or whatever the interest is you have.
Dr. Dennis, isn't the ACT and the SAT test in and of itself changing?
Yes.
And moving more away from multiple choice and more into the area of what's we're going to be doing here at the lower levels?
That's exactly right. The MDP I described is going to, the ACT will look a lot more like that than it has in the past. So there'll be writing justification, things like that, that we haven't had on the ACT in the past.
And that's a national change?
Yes.
I mean, that's a national company.
Yes. Correct.
What do we do with the results of the testing? I mean, is there regular actions that come down or positive actions as a result of doing better or?
This, that's a great question. This year is going to be a baseline year for everybody in the state. We didn't have scores last year, so there's nothing to compare it to. This will set the ground floor for performance on the assessment moving forward. It will become part of our accountability under QPA, Quality Performance Accreditation. Exactly what that looks like is still being developed at the state level. We know they're looking at a five-R model, rigor, relevance, relationships, results, and responsive culture. So it'll be built around that, and there's some rubrics that are being developed for schools and districts to follow. Eventually, yes, there will be some potentially negative consequences for schools and districts that don't do well on assessments. Not entirely clear what that looks like at this point. It will be part, if we still have No Child Left Behind, in other words, if Congress doesn't reauthorize and make changes, we will probably continue to have the waiver process the state applies for every year and describes its accountability system. And that's where our focus schools came from, the priority schools in districts around the state. But what that looks like moving forward as we move to a new test, as No Child Left Behind is reauthorized or changed, that's really still being developed.
So we don't know if there might be some funding availability?
Well, don't know yet. I'm sure you saw the governor's proposal this weekend that would tie performance to money, but I don't know whether that will go anywhere or not.
Has Kite, after a testing website, streamlined, running good?
It seems to be working pretty well. DLM has had the most experience with it. Karen?
I have to go to bathroom for this year.
There have been a few glitches.
And not often.
A few glitches, but significantly better than we had last year. There was a, what was called Break Kite Day back in November or something like that, in which they tried to overload the system statewide. And although there were some glitches in that and some things the state figured out, it was still a better experience than we had last year. So time will tell, but things are looking better than they did this time last year.
So we did break it?
We had problems in the beginning. There was a setting that had to do with caching at CETE that when they changed it, it improved it significantly.
It just is consistent with our efforts to be thorough?
That's right. Ms. Rude?
It, it looks to me like this is an expanded method of assessment that we're assessing more than you.
Correct.
And what we're doing. This is going to involve the majority of our students, if that's correct.
Yes, that's true.
And a great deal of time for the staff.
Yes.
To do this.
Yeah, without a question. You're right.
Well, I do appreciate what you said, though, that we're, we're not focusing on teaching to the test. We're focusing on, on the curriculum that we've selected and applying to meet the standards of college and career readiness, and we feel like things will fall into place if we do the front-end work.
That's correct. If we do a good job teaching our curriculum and our curriculum's well-aligned, and the assessment measures that alignment, then we should be okay.
But what you're saying is science, we know that's not.
Science isn't there yet.
Correct.
You're right.
I just want to say metacognition, so I'm going to say that I think teaching metacognition is going to help our students perform on every aspect of every test that you talked about.
Well, good use of metacognition.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Dennis?
Did we finish testing last year?
No. The state shut down basically before it was.
We stopped and then we were going to start and then stop. Other districts stopped and then we did. We never did finish. Or nobody finished.
Nobody. There may be some isolated places that finished, but mostly not.
Did you get any data at all to use to massage it all?
No.
So did we send what we had in or?
Yeah, they get it automatically because it's done on computer. They, they can see what we did.
But they don't, I mean, it's not enough to say anything.
That's correct. And they got permission from the U.S. Department to not release that information, so.
And that's the state, when we say that?
That, correct. Thank you.
So this makes our testing that we do within each classroom and each school even more important, I would think, so that we know where we stand because this is such delayed data that it's hard to adjust.
Right. Now, in the future, next year, we should be able to get instant feedback as we've done the last several years. This first year, because they haven't set cut scores, we won't have that feedback.
One more question. On the, on the BO in Georgia Matthews, on the iPad pilot, so what happens if their scores aren't any good? I mean, what happens if there's a problem with iPad testing and they don't get it for some reason? How does that affect their scores and our scores as a district?
That's one of the nice things about doing this in a baseline year because we're, we're setting the ground floor. If it, if we know early enough that it's not working, we can switch and put them on a regular laptop or desktop computer. But because this is the first year, it won't have the significant consequence that we may see later down the line.
It's the same test, it's just a different method of testing.
Right, right.
Right.
So.
I just wondered, you know, if there's a prob, you say it's a pilot.
Correct.
So do they know it's a pilot? And will that, will this, okay, that was a pilot program, they obviously didn't test very well using an iPad? Or hey, they did great and everyone should be tested on it.
Well, that's what we're hoping to find out. And by doing it on a smaller scale, we hope we can find that out. It's a lot of work for the technology folks to have to, especially at the high school level where each kid, kid has his own computer, own iPad. They're going to have to take those iPads, configure them, let the kids test, and then take them back and, and take off whatever they did for every student who tests. It, it's a lot of work and a lot of time to do that. Or at the elementary level, we're talking about smaller numbers, and it, my understanding is because they're on a cart instead of held by an individual student, that they can do it more easily.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm worried that, you know, school is deemed not successful because we did this bottom and it didn't work. Or it could turn out the, you know, it's kind of a fifty-fifty chance.
I mean, yeah, it could be.
Yeah, I agree. I'd hate to see the, the method distort the actual results.
Right. That's, that's what we hope to find out.
For any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right ahead in the new business, Dr. Carr, you've got some policies to discuss.
Yes, we do. We have three more for you to take a first reading on. The first one relates to one that we brought to you in the hall. It goes along with the IDAE and came about as a result of legislation that was passed last year dealing with student data and student privacy. And this is the regulation that goes along with the policy. I think it's about page 23 of your packet. We will put in USD 457 and we will take out the note in the final version that you see in the Mrs. language that would go into the Word Policy Book and then could be included in student handbooks, could be sent home in newsletters. And essentially, it's just a specific language informing parents of what our practices will be and what their rights are under that law. There's nothing that's in that that we're recommending any changes other than what KASB has, has provided. The next one is JDC, probation. I think the last time this policy was revised was in 2013. There are two changes that, or places where we are recommending a shift from what KASB has recommends. In KASB's recommendation, they allow the superintendent, a principal, or the superintendent's designee to place a student on probation. Our practice has been to allow the superintendent or their designee to do that, and we primarily use that in our long-term disciplinary hearings. The, the other place that we are recommending a little difference in KASB's original policy, they only allow the superintendent then to revoke a probation if a probation was, was issued. What we typically do is we have the same hearing committee that assigned the probation consider whether or not that probation should be revoked if that happens. And I would say we may see that happen four or five times a year through our, through our hearing process. Consistent with what KASB recommends, the only time that the hearing committees cannot do that is if there's a situation that involves a legal weapon. And that doesn't happen very often. In that case, only the superintendent could approve a probation. We're not deviating from what their recommendation is. There are languages consistent with that. So that's policy JDC. And then the last one we're recommending to you tonight is JDD, suspension and expulsion procedures. There's quite a few changes in, in terms of what our old policy was in referencing other policies that are in the policy book, but really, the only change to the actual policy itself is on the first page. And I believe this is to be in line with the state statute. And that is that our current policy says that conduct which constitutes the commission of a misdemeanor is grounds for a long-term suspension or expulsion. And that statute has changed to say conduct at school, on school property, or of school supervising activity which constitutes the, the commission of a misdemeanor. So it's simply to keep the board's policy in line with what the state law is. And then update some of the references that I think maybe had kind of fallen out of date.
Thank you, Dr. Carr.
Those are the three. Any questions?
All right. You come up with any, just let Dr. Carr know for the next meeting.
Otherwise, these will be on the consent agenda for your approval next time.
All right. Moving on to open discussion.
I have a, maybe consistent with open discussion.
Okay.
But along those lines, I have seen in the past where we make a distinction between a felony if committed by an adult or it's not a felony if it's juvenile. And so in that case where it's an event where it would otherwise be a felony but for the individual's age, then I presume they can't commit a felony because of that age.
Well, technically speaking, you can't commit a misdemeanor. You're not convicted of a misdemeanor either as a juvenile. You're adjudicated a juvenile offender for a crime which, if you are an adult, would be a felony or misdemeanor. So, but I think the language in there says constitutes a misdemeanor. So you're not looking at conviction or adjudication, you're looking at basically what the elements of the crime were. And if you think it's a misdemeanor, then that constitutes a misdemeanor and would fall under the suspension.
Well, that's, you picked right up on it. It's that curiosity of if, if it can't be, if it otherwise were somebody else, then it would be this, but it's not, it's a different person. So how do you say they, they actually perpetrated that?
Well, and Mark, Laura's probably better at, or Jean would be better at explaining this than I would be, but my understanding of that is that if the act that was involved would have been a felony had this person been an adult. And that is, on that grounds, a student may be suspended or expelled. Often, we have, there's, there's other violations that, willful violation of a student adopted, published, conduct code, in and of itself can qualify a student to be long-term suspended or expelled. It doesn't have to have all of those, it's any of those that are in that list. So very, matter of fact, I don't know, Joanne, that I've ever had one that was simply the felony component. It's normally two or three or four of those things apply. But I suppose that the case could exist that if a, if a student was involved in a, in conduct that constituted the commission of a felony, which would make them a danger to be, to be at school, even if that conduct didn't happen at school, that we would, we would initiate a disciplinary proceeding in the interest of the safety of all the kids. But I don't, I don't think that we've ever had something like that or.
That's helpful, Steve. I, I was trying to wrap my mind around if, if they can't be convicted of something, then how do we conclude that they basically did?
Because it's an administrative proceeding versus a legal proceeding?
So would you say they did it?
Well, I think you would have to have the level of proof for the administrative hearing, which I believe is what, clarifying, convincing evidence?
Yeah.
And a criminal case is beyond a reasonable doubt, so it's a different form of proof. But that does lead me to a question about a law that changed a few years ago, and I don't know if I've seen it in the policies. It wouldn't apply to this particular one, but I believe that we're required to notify a victim of certain crimes if the perpetrator is going to the school. And I, I mean, we should have a law at the high school. And I know I talked to Randy about it when the law initially changed, but I don't know, do we have a policy on that or do we need a policy?
I would have, I'd have to do some research to tell you.
Okay.
If we have a policy, I will tell you, our practice is if we're aware of that situation, then we involve Randy and we make sure any notifications that are required occur. And I think we're talking about crimes, maybe of a sexual nature where maybe there's a victim. Again, fortunately, that doesn't happen frequently, but I think we have had some instances where we've had to look at that and make sure that we, we kept separation between those that were potentially victims and those that were maybe involved in certain circumstances. But again, that has very low frequency.
I'm sorry, it was just a random thought based on the session.
Yeah. But I'll follow up with that.
That's where we are on the agenda.
Yeah.
Some deep discussion.
I know, I'm just sitting here going, talk amongst yourselves. Let me know if I need to do anything. Any other open discussion?
I have one, I have one a little easier than that. I'm scheduled for the board agenda meeting on February 24th. I'm going to be out of town, so asking if I could do the one on February 10th. I'm not too sure who's scheduled.
I'm scheduled. I'm happy to let you do it, but I'm not available on the board.
We can just do it through Joanne.
I'll send it tomorrow, but we'll have to find someone for the 24th because I'm going to be gone. Thank you.
I have a question, and I think Mr. Hogan might be the best to answer. I see that on the consent agenda, we've agreed to a contingency search agreement with regard to our CFO search. Can you explain what's going on?
Sure. We started early in November advertising for the position for our CFO. We advertised through the Catwoman Journal, Wichita Eagle, Philogram, a number of other places, United School Administrators, the Kansas Association of School Boards, Kansas Association CPAs, Kansas Association of Business Officers. Talent End is our internal advertising that we do in terms of posting positions. I mean, it gets pushed out to multiple websites, TeachersTeachers.com, and then Kansas Teachers Jobs, which are all digital ways to post positions. So from that initial advertising, we had eight applicants, seven out of district, and one internal candidate. There is a committee that's put together, and that committee reviewed resumes, and we ended up interviewing four candidates. Of those four, we offered the position to a person and they declined. And so we went back to the drawing board, then at that point reopened the advertisement. So in addition to the original places, we also extended our advertisement to Solana Journal, the Pueblo Chieftain, the Colorado Springs Newspaper, which is the Gazette, Hutchinson News. And since that time, which that would have been first part of December, we opened that up again. We've had 11 applicants since that time and have again reviewed those applications and have narrowed it down to two candidates that we're probably going to pursue and interviewing. We haven't done that yet. The thing with the candidates at this point is, especially in this last round, that we're finding, a lot of the candidates aren't probably qualified for the position. And in some cases, it may be, and I haven't done any screening, I've taken all those to the committee certainly, but maybe even like they've clicked on the wrong application and not fully understanding the financial officer position. So that number of having 11 candidates might be a little skewed, but that's, I mean, in total, that's what we've had at this point. So it's been a, it's been a difficult process certainly in order to find someone who's qualified for that. I know there's a, a number of other jobs similar to that around the state. Junction City has one, and till last I knew, they were still looking as well. And then there are also, there's a couple in the Kansas City area. So that's where we're at. Kind of using the recruiting firm is hopefully giving us another avenue of reaching out to people that we haven't been able to reach so far. Along with the advertisements for the newspapers, I mean, it's not just a one-time thing where you get lucky and hit the Wichita Eagle on the day that it's posted. There's online services that runs for like 30 days in addition to that newspaper time. We've scheduled those randomly, so they're in one paper at one time, and we've done it two or three different days in order to just try to get as many contacts out there as we can. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. Again, utilizing that firm, they have connections, certainly regional connections, when we've talked to the gentleman we've had the contact with. You just mentioned places, Kansas City specifically, Colorado Springs, where they have these little, maybe smaller agencies that they'll be able to contact and be able to reach out to people who closely match our requirements in terms of certification.
Thanks for the update. And also, you know, Kathleen Ridley's been kind enough and gracious enough to help us out in this, in our own transition period, but we only have her for a limited amount of time. So, you know, this is becoming a kind of an urgent issue.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate going up to the next level and keeping careers open for possible candidates, so.
And we'll still continue to do what we've done. And we'll still continue to go through our normal processes. We're not throwing up our hands necessarily, so we'll still continue to review applications as they come in. We can still do our own internal interviewing and those kinds of things. And if we find someone, you know, prior to utilizing or having that search firm do it for us, then we're not obligated to them at all. And so we will continue to do that. And as far as advertising goes, you know, we're going to still advertise in the local paper and we'll continue that up until we're able to fill that position. So we'll keep that going as well.
Take our message, students, consider going into accounting.
Exactly.
As you mentioned, Kathleen, you know, here, the pension she certainly has and will have her available to help build the budget through July. KJ Noel also has stepped up and helped out as well, and she's not restricted on hours. So I think she'll help us fill in some of the blanks that we had by not adding this position filled. So thank goodness we have both of those individuals to help us out during this difficult time.
Other questions?
Good update, thanks. Any other more discussion items? Okay. Can you remind us of dates?
It's Thursday.
Jane Marquitt?
I'll be down.
Dayton Moore's the guest speaker. That changes your mind.
I'm not.
Still going to be gone. Oh, I was just kidding. I can go.
Pretty sure I can't make eagerly Oklahoma and Garden City in timely fashion.
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to have a representative. I'll be there, but I'll be... Well, I'll be there as a great faculty. So... We're in a different half? Yeah. Okay. All right. Another announcement, the incoming Kansas Commissioner of Education, Dr. Ray Watson, will be at Coruscant Middle School tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:30. And he's invited community members, school board members, legislators, and interested parties to attend to learn more about his strategic plan for the upcoming year. So it's a great opportunity to meet him and kind of hear what the plan is for the upcoming year, so. That will be at the Courtyard at the...
It'd be hard to get legislators to that. Might be hard to get legislators to that.
Probably, but they're invited. Any other announcements or discussion items? Okay. Moving on, the next Board of Education meeting will be on Monday, February 16th at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room. And we do have a need for executive session this evening. Madam President, I note that we move into executive session at 7:25 for a period of 45 minutes for matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because of this matter, we're discussing it in session. It might invade the privacy of this discussion. Motion for Laura, second by Alex. All those in favor, take the very hand that the motion carries. There will be an announcement...